Get started with our special meeting. This is the elected officials meeting. Today's date is March 19th, 2025. The time is 9:02 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Duncan, Eberline, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I also would like to acknowledge that we have our elected officials here. Jennifer Locke, our clerk, Bela Kovacs, our assessor, Dr. Duke Johnson, our coroner, Bob Norris, our sheriff, Steve Matheson, our treasurer, and Art Verheer is here in lieu of Stanley Mortensen, who is tied up in court today. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we accept the amended agenda. It had item five added after the 24-hour mark.
Okay, you want to make your motion, or is that your motion?
That was my motion.
That's your motion. Is there a second? All right.
Commissioner Eberline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matarri?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Any other changes? Hearing none. Public comment? Would anyone like to speak? Mr. Kovacs, did you want to make a public comment?
I wanted to make a public comment and statement, and I think I might take a few minutes here, but I asked the board to indulge me. I think it's the least that I'm owed.
Well, for a public comment, it's three minutes.
Okay, I'll do my best. In 1789, Commissioners, this is Bela Kovacs, Cootenay County Assessor for the record, in 1789, when working to appoint the Attorney General of the United States, our first President, George Washington, wrote to Edmund Randolph that "the due and proper administration of justice is the firmest pillar of good government." These words are memorialized and enshrined on the Corners of the Supreme Court Justice Building. What is justice? Jeremy Bentham followed a utilitarian consequentialist theory of ethics, basically saying that it doesn't matter who's held accountable, as long as somebody's held accountable. That's a theory that I don't subscribe to. St. Thomas Aquinas borrowed from Aristotle, teaching us that true justice means rendering to every man and to every woman what is their due. On the local level, good government is the duty of the elected officials. At the county level, it begins with the state constitution, Article 18, Section 6, and in Idaho Code, Title 31. That means that you cannot have a county without a board of county commissioners. You cannot have a county without an assessor. You cannot have a county without a treasurer, or clerk, or sheriff, or a prosecuting attorney. Each of these elected officials are co-equal and are representatives selected by the people for the people. They work on behalf of the people. In Idaho County government, the powers are enumerated in Chapter 6, Title 31 Idaho Code. Specifically, Section 31602, the powers of a county can be exercised by the county officers and agents of the county, each acting within the proper scope of their authority, as prescribed by Constitution and law. The powers and duties of county commissioners are enumerated in Chapter 8, Title 31. A county commissioner cannot act except through a board. It takes two county commissioners to take an action. And so while it takes three county commissioners to take an action, it only takes one assessor to file a lawsuit against the board of county commissioners and prevail. But this limitation on power and authority of the county commissioners is not observed and has not been observed historically here in Cootenay County. Although three times now, various commissioners have attempted to recodify and show their contempt for this limitation of power by adopting an alternate form of government, we don't really need to do that here in Cootenay County if you simply ignore the laws and the rules. On numerous occasions, Leslie Duncan, Bruce Matarri, Chris Philios, and Bill Brooks have admonished me, saying that if an elected official acts beyond the scope of their authority, they will be personally held responsible and liable. This applies to county commissioners no less than it does to any assessor, or treasurer, or anyone else. This issue is enshrined in American jurisprudence and is known as Dillon's Rule, Dillon's Law. Idaho is a Dillon State. Government officials only have that power that's given to them by the people, as I've said before. With this in mind, let's ask ourselves, what is justice? And as soon as we ask ourselves this question, we are reminded by another legal adage, that justice delayed is justice denied. Cootenay County is now facing a rather large bill to pay. If nothing is done, then the taxpayers will foot the bill.
Mr. Kovacs, I'm going to have to cut you off. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I will enter this into the record. I will post this on my website, and I will make this public, but I will be heard.
Everyone has allotted three minutes on public comment, and I gave you three and a half, so thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to add some public comment? Please come up to the podium and just state your first and last name, please.
My name is Tim Plus. I'm outside a rathrum. A little over a year ago, I was a candidate for county commissioner, and I spoke different times, and I gave people my opinion of what had happened with Assessor Kovacs. My first question is, and I don't need an answer today, but I would like to have the county tell the taxpayers, and me especially, what was the cost that was incurred by taking his case all the way to the Supreme Court that was just decided last Friday, I think? My understanding is it's the attorney fees for both sides to go all the way to the Supreme Court. I'd like to know what that cost is. If it's $100 or $500, I don't really care, I guess, but I think it's hundreds of thousands, I suspect. What I told people, and I think should have been obvious to all the county commissioners over a year ago, I said, if the sheriff were to be displeasing to the commissioners, and they decided to cut his pay in half or put him half-time, basically, and that's when you cut your pay in half, half-time, so then the commissioners could either appoint somebody to fill the other half of the week, or the undersheriff would fill the other half of the week, but basically it would be the commissioners deciding that they don't want the sheriff to be running the sheriff department, or only half-time. And that's what they did to the assessor. We, the voters, voted for him, and we like what he was doing. We voted for him to run the assessor office. Putting him at a half-pay made him be basically half-time, and maybe his under, his assistants ran the office. The commissioners have no right to put somebody at half-time, an elected official that was elected by the taxpayers, and that should have been so obvious. The taxpayers should not have had to pay to go set precedent and take this all the way to the Supreme Court. It should have been stopped almost immediately. It should have been stopped when Commissioner Matarri came on board, when there was a change. It could have been stopped way back, and that's what I say, and it isn't our fault that this ill-advised plan to take it all the way Supreme Court was done, and we shouldn't have to pay for it, and I'd like to know how much it cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anybody on the line? Jonathan? No? There'll be another opportunity at the end here, so we're going to move on into business. First item is trespass policy for the admin campus. It's a discussion item, and Commissioner Leslie Duncan.
So the elected officials received the document that I sent out last week, and there's also extra copies there, and I just wanted some feedback as far as if the commissioners were to set this policy, is there anything, any concerns that you have? Is there anything you wanted added or wanted taken off? And we'll write an ordinance and pass it for the county, so just.
Just curious on the miniature horses. Are these comfort horses that you're referring to, or just people can't bring them in the building, period?
So they are trained, they are trained miniature horses. That's not my language, but yeah, they have service animals who are miniature horses.
Okay.
Do they have chickens, too?
Yeah, on the 13th, I emailed it to everybody.
Just FYI, those are used primarily by blind people because they live longer than service dogs.
Okay, well, I learned something new today, so thank you.
So if you have any comments, you're okay with that?
As long as, is it for you that we're also?
That's, yes, yeah. So, and legal is producing the ordinance, so.
Just for the layman, could you please define trespass, what that means, and who has the authority to do that?
I think actually the sheriff would probably be a better one to do that.
I'm sorry, Steve, what was the question?
I said to the layman, could you please explain what it means to be trespassed, and who has the authority here at this building or any of the buildings?
And gentlemen, just, you want to push the button so that the microphone can pick you up, at least for the recording? Thank you. Art, you want to take it?
Sure. Anybody with lawful authority in the county can trespass someone if their behavior is inappropriate.
Okay, so it's...
It was established Idaho case law to that effect.
Okay, so any, you said officer?
Lawfully authorized person, like yourself, if someone...
So I am? Is my chief deputy?
I think both of them would be.
Employees?
Probably.
Okay, and that's jurisdictional in this building?
Yes.
If I'm up at the sheriff's office?
No.
No? Okay. And how do I instruct someone to leave? Is there certain words that I need to say, or?
You just give them the reason. You're asking them to leave. Tell them not to come back for a year.
For one year?
For one year, and if they refuse to leave, they can be arrested.
Okay, and who do I call to make that arrest, here at this campus?
Well, it would be a city case, and this issue hasn't come up in terms of us talking to the city about it, but they would have jurisdiction.
Okay. Now, my understanding is there was a situation earlier last week where they suggested that it would be the sheriff that would do the enforcement. Have you heard of this?
I just heard about it two minutes ago.
Okay, so in a situation like that, how would you suggest we respond?
I think we would have to work it out.
Okay. All right.
So, and I'm not a law enforcement expert.
Joe, is your, okay, sorry, I can't see.
I'll try and be louder. My understanding is that, okay, there was a sheriff's deputy in the building, so the call went out to the Coeur d'Alene police, and then the Coeur d'Alene police told the sheriff's deputy, you're closer, basically, you take care of it. Does that then change the jurisdiction, because you've been instructed by the office that technically has jurisdiction to step in?
So if I may clarify the facts of this matter that was being spoken of, when I spoke to the assessor about it directly, there was a lot of miscommunication. The reality of it is, there was a deputy, like I believed, that was in the building, or I thought was maybe even in the vicinity of the building, and saw the call and thought, I'll stop by. He was in the building. He heard the commotion. He went directly to the commotion and was immediately confronted in the fact of, why are you here? This isn't your jurisdiction, and said, I'm just trying to keep the peace because I heard this. Ultimately, city was called, and there have been discussions since we no longer have a deputy that's working here. This has always been the jurisdiction within the city of Coeur d'Alene. They have jurisdictional responsibility over this building. When our deputy is no longer working here full-time, I reaffirmed with their command staff that they, in fact, this is their jurisdiction. They will handle any and all incidents originating from there. That doesn't preclude a deputy sheriff, who has jurisdiction throughout the county, if he's in the area or in the building, to take any type of police action, which he did. He tried to intercede, but ultimately was, if you will, somewhat turned away, and then city ultimately came and responded and handled it under their jurisdiction.
Can you tell me who instructed you that it was not your jurisdiction? You said that you came down, or the deputy came down for the commotion, and you were instructed that the sheriff was not the proper authority. It wasn't your jurisdiction. Who made that claim?
Well, the person who originated the call, which was from the assessor's office, I'm not sure specifically who originated that call, but our deputy, and then speaking to him, said I was somewhat confronted and said that, why are you here? You don't have jurisdiction, and he didn't have an opportunity, he felt, as though saying, I was just in the building and heard it, thought I'd stop in, but ultimately then deferred to the city.
Let's be very, very clear here. You can have dual jurisdiction. So a Cootenay County sheriff, or a Cootenay County deputy sheriff, has jurisdiction anywhere in Cootenay County. Is that very clear? I want to make sure everybody understands that.
That's my understanding, and I appreciate the clarity. I wish we had the assessor here to maybe explain the situation a little bit better, but apparently he had something else better to do.
And then I have one more question with regarding, with regard to the trespass. If someone has been, so in this situation, someone's been trespassed by the assessor, but it's someone who is a taxpayer. Are they trespassed from the whole building, or can they still come in and pay their taxes?
It's going to be, I think it would be apartment-dependent, and it would also relate to where it happened in the building. So if it happened in a common area in the building, and somebody from EOCC, a commissioner trespassed them, then it would be from the building. Whereas if it happened in a department building, inside the department building, and they were trespassed by one of the elected officials, then I think it would pertain to just that department.
Fortunately, this is not a big problem here. Is anyone else?
Well, actually, Bruce, it is becoming more and more of an issue, especially during, and we've mentioned this many times during the tax collection period. We get people with mental illness coming in the office, making claims, and it's not occasional. It's now almost predictable, each and every tax collection, both in June and December. So I think we need to get this right and make sure that we all understand the details, because it's inevitable, we're going to do something just slightly wrong, and I don't want to be in a position now to defend the county, or actions taken by my chief deputy or myself, or in this case, the assessor, when we don't have clear direction that we're all comfortable with. So I think it's going to become more and more of an issue.
I think that we do have the sheriffs on board, and they do provide a deputy one week in December, one week in June, for your collection weeks. So you're covered there, but yes, I agree that we need to make sure that we're following policy and doing things the right way.
Technically, it's not a whole week. It's a couple of days, but yes, I appreciate that.
Anything else on this issue?
Commissioner, if I may, I would ask kindly that maybe the prosecutor's office reach out to the city attorney just for some, if you will, inner understanding between the two offices as to, for clarity, because I'm not certain as to where that lies, having spoken with the city police department in regards to their belief and regards to this trespassing statute. So that'd be the only thing that I think we could, would benefit us.
And are you referring to the fact that if a city employee trespasses somebody, that it falls outside of the purview of their prosecuting attorney's office, and that can be an issue, or is this a different?
No, the mere fact that there's been discussion as to the understanding of how someone can be trespassed from a public government building, and I was speaking with Art about what the interpretation of the law is, maybe by the city attorney as opposed to the prosecutor's office. I think that would be a benefit.
City attorney handles misdemeanors in the incorporated city, so I think just to have an understanding of what their requirements are.
Okay, to ensure that the law can be fulfilled, but within the jurisdictional boundaries that we have to work with it.
I strongly support that, and I think it needs to come from the city with clarity that they can provide to us how they're going to interpret, you know, authority to trespass here in their jurisdiction, so.
I'll take care of that.
Thank you. Anything else on this issue, this item? Okay, moving on to item number two. Central committee signup sheet. It's a discussion item, and we have Commissioner Leslie Duncan again.
Sure. I would refer to Jennifer, Steve. How long are you guys aware that the central committee's been used in our building, both the Republican and Democrat? 2012, or earlier than that?
I don't know.
Okay, so at least a decade, right? So both central committees have permission from a longstanding agreement with the commissioners, and so our policy requires that we have a county employee open and a county employee close those meetings to make sure that everybody's out of the building. And in the past, we've had up to four employees who were actually on the central committee, so they'd handled that. We only have one now who's on the central committee, and he has asked if there's anybody who would like to sign up to open and close, if we could share that responsibility for those meetings. And so there's a signup sheet, which I would say that anybody outside this building doesn't need to sign up for it, but anybody who does work on campus is free to sign up and, you know, take some burden off the one person who's on the committee who would be saddled with 11 openings and closings, so. Questions?
Looks like I was self-volunteered on one, but.
That was when we were at IC, and your staff took care of it.
Yeah. This is only the Republican Central Committee. Is there also a signup sheet for the Democrats?
So the Democrats, to my knowledge, have not been meeting here, even though they have permission to, and they have it, you know, set up. They stopped meeting here during COVID.
Okay.
But yes, we would have a signup for them as well if they were still here.
Or anybody who reserves a room.
So no, so those are the only two outside organizations, per policy, that have, that are allowed to use the building. Everything else has to have a nexus. Aquifer Protection District, any advisory boards, we did it for University of Idaho Extension in the past, so it has to be, you know, your sheriff town halls, it has to have a nexus to the county. Those are the only two things that don't. So as they come around, see if you're available, and that'd be helpful to help this longstanding tradition. Thank you.
We've been doing it every year since I've been here, so I see no reason why we need to change. Any other comments or questions on item number two? No, moving on to three. Management training for new supervisors. It's a discussion item, and we have Commissioner Leslie Duncan again.
Sure, and I might call Sylvia in for some background.
Comment your question.
Each of you received the draft management training discussion, and I just wanted a high-level conversation on if HR were to put in effort to have like a series, would the elected officials be willing to send their new, and it could be, you know, more experienced managers and supervisors as well, but I didn't want HR to go through a big thing if the elected officials were not going to be on board. And already, there is a whole iCrimp series, which I highly recommend, and I'm hoping to get kind of a checkoff sheet. It would be pretty easy. That way, when you have a new supervisor, you can say, hey, here's the iCrimp trainings, and then here is what HR offers to help new supervisors make sure that they're abiding by FSLA rules and that we're not stepping into employee problems.
Does anyone have any comments on this?
I think in the past, we had that, and I thought it was useful, and I know my supervisors and managers would be interested in something like this.
This was something that I brought before HR meeting a month or two ago, that we did not have a management training program inside the county. And the main impetus for this was the fact that we ended up dealing with a lot of management issues with employees because they weren't, or employee issues because of management, I should say, because they weren't properly disciplined. And as a result of that, things were allowed to fester over the years, and at some point, the lack of proper management led to what sometimes could be argued expensive separation events. And so the whole purpose, at least why I brought it before, was so that we could start to have some bare minimum that employees understood how to properly communicate and discipline employees, so that when something gets to HR, that the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, and we can move swiftly. The reality is that you want to get rid of bad people quickly because of your good people in your organization. Good people shouldn't have to work with bad people and carry water for them. It demoralizes, and so that was the main impetus of it. And so somewhere between properly training your supervisors and managers on how to communicate and discipline employees, up to a full leadership course, which I think is really what's being presented here, is just really a choice for the elected officials. The hope is, is that the elected officials would embrace at least some bare minimum of this, so that when there is an employee issue, we don't have to start the clock over again. We don't have to revisit some of these disciplinary actions over and over and over until we get it right, and that it allows us to move quickly when we have a difficult person that just isn't making it inside the county organization. So really, I think for everyone here, it's just a matter of, you know, where would you like to go with this, and give some direction, as opposed to the board just kind of laying it out and saying, well, we decided that the rest of the elected officials should consider doing this, A, B, or C. And so is there any feedback from any of you about what you would like to see?
Are you speculating it would be a four-hour or eight-hour? What are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are that as soon as someone becomes a supervisor or a manager, that they are properly trained in how to communicate. that they are properly trained in how to communicate and fill out the proper paperwork if they have to discipline someone, getting a signature, you know, the different steps that are in the county policy and to ensure that it's done properly. I think what's before you here in this document is significantly more than that. So I can't speak to how much time that would take, but it looks like there's a little bit of recurring training in here as well. Commissioner Duncan, did you have some thoughts on that?
No, I didn't want HR to go down that path if we didn't have buy-in. So if we have buy-in, then yeah, I'm willing to have them go down and we can have the conversation along the way about what would be most beneficial. You know, I don't think a 40-hour course in one week is going to be, although it'll be beneficial, I don't think it'll be realistic. So we'll just continue to talk about what's available. And we need to start with what's available with iCrimp right now today, because obviously there are liability insurance and getting them through those one-hour series, it's really easy to watch, you know, would be the starting point until we can get a good program like Jennifer said we had in the past. So as long as we have, you know, agreement that you would consider it your office, you know, Stan?
Yeah, I mean, from a liability perspective, it's a good idea. The sheriff's office would be open for that discussion.
Okay.
And in the coroner's office as well, I would suggest that maybe we begin with the most critical aspects of what the county was running into problems first, so that we're all trained, basically, it seems as if, of the options here, legal considerations, adverse, employee actions, process, et cetera. So if we could just jump right on what is most critical, then maybe expand it from there so that at least we're getting what is most important to the county.
And if I could just add to that, you know, the idea too was partly, we have an employee policy manual for everyone, but we don't really have a supervisor or management kind of policy manual that says if you're going to manage people, here are your protocols that you have to follow. And that would include the communicating and disciplining side. Just something to start with. So that way, elected officials, chief deputies, they can hold their managers and supervisors accountable to following an established procedure. And part of the reason for this is because iCrimp drives a lot of the decision-making. If iCrimp wants to get behind a separation, they want to see these I's dotted and T's crossed. But when they say, nope, you didn't do it right for some reason, it's important that we have at least some guidebook for your supervisors and managers to at least refer to, so that they can have something. And you can hold them accountable, because bad management is just as bad as, you know, an employee that's not following policy.
Duke, I would speculate that they would probably tier it with policy of equality type of stuff, sexual harassment, hostile work environment, discrimination, that kind of stuff. And that would be your big-ticket items from iCrimp. So I would imagine that would be the tiered aspect of it.
And the iCrimp has a supervisor series where they meet in person. It's four, I think they've changed one of them to online, so maybe it's only two or three that are in person now. But it's like an eight-hour day, and I think it's four total days' worth of training. It's very useful, especially for the kinds of things you're talking about, because iCrimp's focus is risk, right? It doesn't really address the sort of management questions with regard to now you're a manager, like what's changed, but it's very good as far as the teaching them about FMLA and how to address performance issues and all of those things.
And those things are good. They're good for people to be exposed to it, but like a lot of things, you need repeat exposure. And so having a document that someone can rely upon and reference just to see under various different situations. And it may even say, under this situation, contact HR. I mean, it could be. But that at least ensures that the process from the beginning goes down the right direction before we go down there and we go, oops, we didn't do this the way we should have. So if, maybe the way to start is with a, just some sort of management manual to start with, and then maybe we can kind of build on that. Does that work for people? Then we can present it to the elected officials.
I agree with that, because see, a lot of times, you know, classes and programs are kind of designed for all of government, all of management, and it ends up being, some of it, obviously, a waste of time. But if we could have something focused that really applies to us and our county and then expand from that, I agree totally.
Okay, well, then it sounds like there's some direction on that. Okay, anything else on this particular item? No, moving on to item number four. Policy 600 for FY '26 budget process, and we have Clerk Jennifer Watt.
Yes, I handed out, we had this revision of job evaluation classification policy 600, I think last October, and I kind of wanted to make the elected officials aware kind of what's going on to the process from last year. So at a recent budget direction meeting on March 6th, we discussed the process for new positions and requesting for conversions or reclass for fiscal year '26. The process is going to be different this year than last year. All elected officials must bring, according to this policy, any new positions or conversions, reclass requests to an HR meeting before the board, and the board then will decide if those positions can be reviewed or regraded by HR. After this Thursday's HR meeting, there will only be two more HR meetings on April 3rd and April 17th for the board to review or approve any personnel requests that are new positions or reclass to be sent to HR. And then from there, all those have to be submitted, if they're approved, to HR by the 21st of April for review for them. If you're trying to add an existing position to your budget request, that does not have to go before the board in an HR meeting for approval to go to HR. So the one point in policy 600, which is under procedure, the first bullet point, was changed, and it says all requests for a job evaluation, initial reclassification of a position must be presented to the BOCC at a public meeting for review. The BOCC determines that the job evaluation process may occur. I believe that this policy outside of the budget process cycle should apply to all BOCC departments and all elected officials. However, I do want to discuss this policy when it comes to asking for new positions or conversions/reclass for elected officials other than their BOCC departments, when it's in within the actual budget request process for this year. I think it's important that each elected official be able to properly assess their needs and submit their requests to the board during the budget process. That's the time when this really should be happening. And then be able to articulate to the overall need to the departments in a budget meeting before the board. It is the one time that personal requests really should be coming before the board as there have been, there has been a trend of many mid-year changes that can add to the next budget year process before the next budget's even open. For example, in fiscal year '24, mid-year ask increased for fiscal year '25 budget was about 2.3 million. And then in fiscal year '23, mid-year asked increased the fiscal year '24 budget before it was open about 768,000. So however, I still think it's important that all BOCC departments go before the board in an HR meeting to explain to their three elected officials, the BOCC, the needs for the new position or reclass, and what grade and dollar amount they're seeking before HR review any of their request. So I wanted to just open this up to the elected officials to see how they felt about it, and obviously, the board, because they do set policy, if this is going to be an exception to policy, if they choose to go that direction, or if we update that policy 600 when it comes to anything regarding the budget process. Again, in the budget process, I think any elected official should be able to present those requests for new positions and conversions to the board. Outside of the budget process, if it's a mid-year ask, then I still think that review should go before the board for approval before it goes on to HR.
Jennifer, if I may, I'm sorry that I didn't understand, there seemed to be a contradiction there with, it seemed as if the, as far as reclassifications are concerned, that the current policy is to come before the board first, and the proposal is to come before HR first, before then going before the board for some reason.
So the current policy, so the new updated policy requires us, and we have essentially two more HR meetings to do this as elected officials, before we can even take it to HR for an initial new position or reclassification, we have to take it before the board for them to say that we can take it to HR. And for me, I think it's the one time, the budget process really important, is each elected official to say, we're assessing our needs, and then be able to justify that in a budget meeting before the board. So I, that's what I'm asking essentially. Does that make sense from there?
I'm still trying to understand the difference. I mean, and I'm just thinking purely of reclassification. So in other words, I understand mid-year, et cetera, and I understand being associated with the budget, but my confusion comes from the process of step fashion. When I first heard it, it sounded as, the policy has been to come before the Board of Commissioners with your request for reclassification, but now it sounds as if you're saying, go before HR, before the committee, or has that not changed?
No, so the policy was updated from last year. We have to go before the board, whether it's inside or outside of budget process for initial or creation of a position or reclass. So the old way was during the budget process, and before that even, even mid-year, each elected official could just go to HR and ask him to class a new position or look at reclassing an existing position.
I struggle with having to go in front of the Board of Commissioners, asking for something that I'm going to need HR's help on without doing the work necessary to answer any legitimate questions that the board might have. So I'm not sure how that is expected to work when there's a requirement for an elected official to come before the board to ask, I guess what you're asking us to do is permission to utilize HR in our justification for a job reclassification.
And I will echo Steve Matheson's comment, I'll make it a little bit more forcefully. I think it's another overreach on the part of the board to shut down the ability of another elected official to even conduct an evaluation before we can even have a discussion. If the board proceeds this manner, you're going to find yourself in another lawsuit.
All right, so I want to add a little more to this, because I've spoken with the clerk about this. And, you know, the intention isn't to put obstacles in front of people. The intention is to at least force a separate discussion on why more staff are needed. Now, coming into this position, I noticed that people would ask for mid-year requests. I need more staff. Staff comprises two-thirds of our budget, roughly. So when you ask for more staff, you're actually increasing your budget significantly a lot of times. Well, one of the things that kept happening was I was being told I need more people as opposed to being shown that I need more people, that there's no metrics in departments to show people. So what happens is, is that we have these positions, sometimes they kind of get buried in the budget sometimes. And, you know, the commissioners, of course, are tasked with these situations of deciding how the money gets spent and whether more taxes have to go up. Well, quite often, each of you, when you make your requests, they come across as being quite reasonable. But when we have to go to the community and say, we need to increase your taxes, the ire comes to the board and not to the elected officials who have greater needs. And so at least, the hope is, is that if you want to expand your staff, show the board, show the community that you have this need. And if the need is legitimate, then there's no reason on the planet why you shouldn't get it. But that, in essence, is the intention that I would like to see, okay? How we get there is less important. So if we do put something in the budget that an elected official, and the same for the board with their own department heads, they need to make that case in public. So that way, people in this community can see the challenges and understand, look at the same information the board sees and understands why we make the decisions that we do. And I've come, and I've come to find that when I make the case that the sheriff's office is losing, that we're hiring and training people and losing those people to local jurisdictions, and that is why we had to increase taxes one year so we could pay them to keep them from losing, you know, losing these people, they were fine with it. But we need to be able to create a system that shows this community why the money is needed and where exactly it's going to go. And so that was the whole purpose of it. So however we do this policy here, in the end, I would just like us to have a situation where if you want additional staff, you want to reclassify, you, any of those types of things, it comes before the board in a public meeting and you make that case. And if that is a good enough case for us, it should be a good enough case for the community. Yeah, so if there's a way that this policy can be massaged to achieve that, it sounds like, you know, we have some, at least, buy-in on that concept.
So I want to make it, these dates are relevant and that it's important. June 2nd is the kickoff date where Brandy, our finance director, will present the preliminary summary. A lot of times, what's happening is the BOCC meets with their departments like in May. And so we're going to be at these meetings, I've talked to Brandy, and as they discuss this, they need to be fully transparent when they say one and a half positions, what positions are being converted, what are new, what grade expectation, and what amount is going to be added. But until we come to that June 2nd meeting, when all the elected, we roll up all the elected official's budget, you know, we do always present that personal A budget request. But we will make sure, as each elected official has their meetings and they fill out these sheets for new positions in our budget book, that if it's not brought up in the meeting, that the auditor's office will bring up the request for any new positions or conversions and what impact, grade-wise or cost, that will be. And sometimes that hasn't been happening, so we will be doing that.
Is there anyone else that has any comments at this point?
Bruce?
I have a comment.
I know, I'm going to get to you.
Okay.
You know, I'm sorry, but this is a meeting for elected officials, and when you get up and leave and then come back and just kind of do these things, there's, you know, I wish you wouldn't, because it kind of shows a little bit of disrespect for the others that are here. So I will get to you, okay? Is there anyone else that has any comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Would it, I understand your intent, and I understand your issues. Could it be that instead of the elected officials coming in front of the board, asking for permission to engage HR, they come in front of the board, notify the commissioners that they're going to be doing whatever study they're doing with HR? And then it's still transparent, but the elected officials don't feel like?
Well, from my perspective, as long as there is a public meeting, and, you know, the, it can be illustrated as to the need for additional staff, the need to change things around, I don't have any problem with it. It's not about making it harder for you, it's about making it so that the public can see what is happening, and they see the same information that we see. And then we make those decisions. Mr. Assessor?
Commissioner Matarri, I don't disagree with the summary that you've given. I believe we all have a desire and a want to plan, but often, what happens is, after the first shot is fired, all plans go to hell. And typically, if you look at the calendar from the months of March to about June or July, is crunch time for the assessor's office. That just happens to coincide with budget time. And it's very, very difficult to juggle everything. What I'm asking for is the ability to go before and work with HR on the fly to be able to evaluate our needs, all with the purpose of planning, all with the purpose of incorporating it into the annual budget. That's my desire and my intent, and that's what I want to work towards. It doesn't always play out that way. And I need the ability to be able to do these things way ahead of schedule, before we're into our crunch time. I will also say that not everything is a mid-year appropriation in the context of how you're presenting it. A couple of weeks ago, we came before the Board of County Commissioners to fill a position, perfectly within the boundaries of county adopted policy. We had a higher-level position called a lead appraiser position. All we wanted to do was save the county forty, almost $48,000, and fill that position with a lower-level appraiser. And you characterized it as a mid-year request, and as though we were changing our organizational structure, we cannot hire into a higher grade, a higher level of expertise appraiser position. We have to consider the pool of applicants that we have, and if they don't have the certifications, it makes no sense to hire them into the higher-level position. And so all I'm asking from the board is a little bit of a flexibility so that we can accomplish these objectives. When we have that position that we have, the When we had that position that we had to fill, there was nothing we could do to avoid that mid-year. We are going to have mid-year requests. We need to have the ability to adapt on the fly, and fill those positions while we're doing it, and save the county money. So, I'm asking for a little bit of flexibility and latitude, that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, so first of all, the reason why there was an issue at the HR meeting is because you hired, or you offered a job to somebody for a position that did not exist yet.
That is false.
And that is not how it was characterized in that meeting.
That, that is false.
Okay, you had your chance to speak.
Well, I'll, I'll continue to speak.
Well, Assessor Kovacs, look, you have your chance to speak, other people have a chance to speak, there's no need to interrupt them, okay?
There are long pauses of silence, Bruce, and, and, and I'm going to, I'm going to respond, when I hear false information presented in a public forum, I'm not going to tolerate it anymore.
But that's what was, that's what was said in the HR meeting. And so, in the end, and, and it was stated, that we were, we were in essence, put in a position where an offer was made, and we were compelled to make the change on the position, because if they started on Monday, the following Monday, there wouldn't be a position for them.
That's false. That's, that was your perspective, and after 30 minutes...
I, I don't believe that was my perspective alone.
After 30 minutes, you...
The way he's describing it is exactly the way it happened.
It's not, it's not, it is not the case.
So with that said, the second reason is, is that the reason why, you know, me personally, and it's up to the board's discretion, want to avoid the mid-year changes, is because what happens is, is it digs into next year's budget. It automatically allocates money to your department, or someone else's department, before the budget even starts. And it's our job as a board to make sure the funds are properly allocated to where they're needed most. We have restrictions on how high, and how much more we can increase the budget. And so therefore, these mid-year requests gobble up what is allowed and allocated for the next year's budget. So, I would argue that, yes, you may have these certain needs at different, at bad times of the year for you, do the best you can, but in the end, you know, the, the policy, I believe, and again, if it's, if this board agrees with it, is to try to avoid these mid-year requests, in an effort to preserve more flexibility on the following year's budget. That is the intent of it, okay? So I realize you may not like that, but that is the intent.
As I said, my, my objective is to plan the budget out. We are going to have mid-year requests, where it's perfectly within the parameters of the policy, to fill it at a lower-level position. That's all our request was. We did have an open higher-level position, we wanted to downgrade it, and that's all it was.
Thank you.
Exactly, and that's exactly what he just said. You had a lead position, and you were filling a two-position, we had no open two positions, so therefore, we downgraded the position. That's exactly what he said.
That's what the request was on the agenda, to downgrade it. That is the request.
Yes, and that's exactly what happened.
Okay, yeah.
Sure.
What if, what if there's some language that if the reevaluation is likely to produce a decrease, that we don't go to the board first, that we can just go to HR? If it's likely to incur an increase, then we have to go to you first. I mean, would that, Jennifer, would that...
Is that outside the budget process, or mid-year? Because I think there's a distinction. The, the elected official should be presenting their ask and their needs before the board.
Sure.
And so, I'm not going to say they're going to say yes or no to each decision, but I think inside that process is important that the, each elected official be able to present that, you know, and typically, we're not going to present that until later May and June, right? And so we're asking right now, and I've already talked to one of my departments in district court, that are looking at some reclass, and then we have a new position that's coming up, it's not brand-new, it's existing position, but we have to add another judicial assistant, because we're getting a new district court judge.
I, I guess this would more apply for the mid-year.
Yeah, because right now, we only have two more after this HR meeting, to get this on, an HR meeting, and I don't, I mean, I don't know how long this agenda would be. So I'm just saying, it makes sense, if it's in the budget process, that we should be able to go to HR and get that reviewed, so we could properly present these requests to the board. If it's outside the budget cycle, it's mid-year, I think it is important that the board is aware that you go before them and ask, can we get this reclassed?
So now, things are a little bit more muddy. So, are you suggesting a change to the policy?
Or exception, I talked to Dave, either like, we can discuss it today, and then you guys can make a decision at the business meeting, with an action item on...
So I guess where I started from, is that I didn't want HR doing a bunch of reclassifications going through the entire process, if the board wasn't going to support it. So if a department or elected official came and said, hey, we have this reclass, here's our new org chart, this is how everything fits into it, then the board would be like, absolutely, go to HR and go through that process. I didn't want HR to spin their wheels, and go through all these asks, if they were just going to get cut later.
I guess my concern is, you guys aren't seeing the big picture until we present the budget on June 2nd, and we possibly could be shut down in the next two weeks, or the next two HR meetings, before being able to present those ask, and maybe why there's a need. And obviously, I, personally, I wouldn't bring anything, and I've cut positions in the past, unless I thought it was appropriate, but I think the elected official, during this budget process, is important that they have the ability to bring these ask, and then you guys, after you see the bigger picture, determine, no on a reclass, no to a new position. But I just think that's important, for people particularly, that are trying to deal with in the budget process, and not do all these mid-year changes.
Sure.
That they should be able to go to HR and get these looked at for reclassification.
Could I present something here? If the board is agreeable to it, Clerk Lock, would you be open to just providing some sort of amended policy on this?
Okay.
That we could look at fairly quickly, whether, you know, before the next business meeting? I know we have an HR meeting tomorrow, I don't know if that's something that we would be able to even get done before then, but at least, talk about it, and status update, and, and if...
Well, can I have it ready to go? I'll send it to you guys. Really, it's just, under procedures, that I think the first bullet point, is just saying, if it's outside the budget process, follow this. The only determination, and you guys can make this determination, but I think this is where it's happening, is the BOCC departments should have to go and get two approval, before they go to HR for review, and what they expect for grade, and the cost of the increase.
And they do, they do, right now. But yeah, if you could do that, and then get that back to us, and if you want to send it out to some of the other electeds, just for their feedback on that...
Okay.
Then we can try to move quickly, because we know we're in bunch, in budget season right now.
Okay.
Crunch time. Anything else on item number four? Hearing nothing, all right, we'll move on to item number five. Policy number 414, it's a discussion item. I believe this came from the treasurer's office, but there's no one listed here to talk about it.
Um, we, I had some of my team members ask me, because there were some flyers posted around the county, had some taxpayers ask what the flyers were. And then I happened to be in the hallway, when the sheriff was walking by, when the trespass was happening, talking to Jeff Voller, and because my team had asked me, I asked Jeff Voller, you know, is there a policy as to what flyers we put up? And he thought there was, and then I felt really bad, because I've put flyers up, and didn't go through, I guess Jonathan is communications, but maybe I'm okay, because the flyers said, like, our office will be closed at lunchtime. Just wanted to get some clarification on what kind of flyers, or notices, I can put up with, without going through the communications person, and what notices I need permission for.
I don't, I don't even know where to begin on answering that one for you. Who, is your question directed to the board? Or...
Yeah, I don't know. So I, I probably can shed a little bit of light on this. The elected officials have the authority to post printed materials in the area where they conduct business, right? Inside your office, you can post whatever you need to. When it is in the common areas, that is up to the BOCC, unless there's a public bulletin board, which we do not have in this building. So if it is something that is unrelated to your specific operation as an elected official, you know, like Art likes to play tennis, and he's got this tennis group, right? That would be something that you would just, hey, can I post this flyer? Or, you know, you got an accolade, because you did a fantastic job, which you always do, on one of your cases, you wouldn't go post that around in the common areas, right?
Art would do that.
So, but, so, so the, the BOCC has the control and authority over the common areas, and the elected officials have the authority and control inside their offices. So if there's anything, obviously, posting office hours is very much related to your operations, so those kinds of things, you don't need our permission to do that.
Does that answer your question? Okay, any other comments on this? Okay, that concludes the business. We'll move on to public comment. Would anybody like to speak?
Jonathan, I'm online.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get to online. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Yes, come on up to the podium, and just state your first and last name, please, for the record.
Hari Heath, and I live in Benowa County, but I'm up here a lot. I'm Legislative District Two Chairman for the Republican Party, which has some ground in Kootenay, and four other counties. I'm also the writing manager of People's Pen, so I've had the, the blessing and curse of looking into the assessor's office story, and writing about it. And I find that much of the problems that exist in the county pre-exist anybody that's elected presently. And I've seen Bela, Assessor Kovacs, attempt to fix some of it, and, and I noted that some, some portions of it are being fixed pretty well, particularly the computer system. And there's a lot still needs to be ongoing. I find that the acrimony between parties is really the core of the problem, and it's always challenging how to, in a sense, bury the hatchet. I hope that that can be done someday. But I, I really find there's a lot of good people across the spectrum on this whole question, that are doing a good, good work. And I just want to encourage that somehow, to find a way to, you know, bury the hatchet, move forward, and solve the problems, many of which are 20 years old. There needs to be some better systems in place, which you're, you're working on, and I really want to see that happen, because, one, I've, I've come to learn the incredible mess that's handed by statute, called tax collection and assessment. It's got to be one of the biggest monsters, to put four different offices through a multi-step process, across all the different taxing districts, and put it together to somehow get property tax, which is a violation of Article One, Section One of the Constitution anyways, and somehow pay for all of the things that we would like to have as citizens, like driving down the road and stopping at the stoplight on occasion, in organized manner, et cetera. So, I really, mostly I want to say that, that I've found, you know, a lot of good folks across the spectrum, and that there's, there's personal acrimony in both directions, and I, I hope that that can somehow be resolved. Sometimes, third parties are the best way to do that, but I look forward to that someday, getting Kootenay County to operate better than it is presently. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, here in this room? Online?
Hello?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Oh.
And please state your first and last name for the record.
Okay, this is Deborah Rose, Bruce. I would like to address the KCRCC meetings in the county building. I think that they are a legal liability to the county. They, they claim to be a private group, and they have no nexus to the county, so I don't think they should be allowed to meet in the admin building. This board is not obligated to honor previous boards' decisions, and I think they should be allowed, let them meet in, in one of their highly political church buildings instead. But if this board insists on letting the KCRCC continue to meet in the admin building, then I suggest the group be required to carry an insurance policy, with the county listed as an additional insured entity, so to help to eliminate liability for the county, as a result of the KCRCC activities. Kootenay County's culture has changed greatly since 2012, when it sounds like that's when the Central Committee was allowed to start meeting in the county building, and we know that the Democrats don't meet there anymore. And when it comes to loss of civility and respect for others, this is becoming, obviously, a problem in this county, and I just don't want to see anybody getting hurt, and I don't want to see the county end up being liable for what takes place at, at these private meetings in the county building. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? No? Okay, Assessor Kovacs, you have three minutes.
Commissioners, I just wanted to finish up by saying, I hope, and writing on the tailcoat of what Hari Heath just said, I would hope that the commissioners could work together to find out, find a way to hold the citizens at the county harmless, and, and not have the county incur the expense. I have made requests as to what the total cost is, but I'm, now I'm getting responses back that I have to pay. That's only going to increase the cost further. I'd like to know what the total sum is, which is on both sides. And I ask that the commissioners relax that requirement, because this is a matter of public interest, that many people are asking about, and I don't think that question's going to go away. I guess I'd like to finish by asking one que, one question of each of the commissioners here, as far as the services of outside attorney services. Is Lake City Law on retainer with the Board of County Commissioners? I'm asking that question individually of each one of you right now. Can you please tell me if that's the case?
I mean, this is public comment, so you have your three minutes to say your piece here.
Well, I'm asking the question, can you answer the question?
I'm not prepared to answer that question right now.
So you don't know? Do you know?
I just said I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Okay, so you don't, you, so...
You're making assumptions.
I'm asking a question.
Yes, and public comment, comment. It is not questioning answer.
Okay, all right. So even, even in the interest of providing public interest information, you're not willing to answer the question. Final question. Commissioner Matarri, and of course, Commissioner Eberlin is new, so I'm not, this question doesn't really apply to him, but have you seen or read the assessor's five-year plan?
This is public comment. Okay, make your comments, you have three minutes.
I would ask that you seek out and read the assessor's five-year plan, it'll answer many of your questions, that you seem to ask in public meetings. And with that, I'll end.
Thank you. Anybody else? 10:07, meeting adjourned.